Good evening. We like to begin our October meeting with the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if everyone's had a chance to look over their minutes and operating statements from last month, motion for approval?
I make a motion that we approve September 2025 operating statements, September 22nd, 2025 council meeting minutes, and October 6th, 2025 work session minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing non-aloud in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motion's carried. And then also for the Quantum.
I'll make a motion that we approve Quantum's financial statements for September 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions?
For Shriner Court.
Yes.
Yes, for Shriner Court.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing non-aloud in five for aye?
Aye.
Noes, motion's carried. Okay, under my report, we do have some issues here in the town office with trying to come up with places to store things. And right now, we, our historical society has, commission has been kind of not existing. I would like to make a recommendation that we take that part of the pump house building over there and do some assessments on that and move our storage over there. And the things that we have for the historic society will be kept in proper upstairs over there. But we can take that whole downstairs and make the addition that we need for our storage, take these file cabinets, put it over there and things like that, and use that part of the building. Being as the historic society is not in operation now, maybe one day that we can get historical building up on Main Street somewhere and put the, you know, when we get a committee that's really active. So, that's just a recommendation that we use that whole building, that whole part over there. See about getting rid of that pump. There's people that want to buy those old things for use of them and we can, you know, take assessment of the building and see what it's going to get on, you know, some prices and see what it's going to cost to convert that over to our storage that we need very bad. So.
I agree.
Okay.
Should not years ago.
I think we should have a motion.
Yes.
I move that we repurpose the old pump house for storage for the town hall.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing non-aloud in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes? Thank you. Motion's carried. When we built this building back in 93, everybody, or 90, yeah, when we started this building, it says, "What do you need a building that big for?" Well, it's outgrown, it's, you know. So, we didn't build it big enough, but we did what we had to do at the time and we didn't cost taxpayers of town any money because it was all done on volunteer and fundraisers. So, that worked out well. I just received a phone call to a gentleman committed this evening, about 5 o'clock, that this year we will be, for people that, residents that live within the town corporation, we will be having a Christmas decoration contest this year. And we'll have, well, we'll decide how we're going to do it. The last time we had, it was the whole house, it was the front door and what all did we have the last time we did that? It's been several years, but we will have a decorating contest this year. Gentleman just called me this afternoon and confirmed donating the money to pay for the contest. So, we'll have to, our next work session, decide what the categories are. But I figured if we tell the people now, they can start thinking about how they want to decorate their houses, but it is for in-town residents and the corporation of the town. So, sorry Kenny, you're right outside of town. Unless you might be annexed. So, we'll be doing that. That's about all. Let's see, what else do I have? Well, I figured we'll discuss that. I figured the judging would be somewhere between the 15th and 18th, right before Christmas. I talked to Laura about making sure that the wiring was okay going up for the rest of the life that she wants to put up this year. And I have, for Tony, I have a parking issue on East Elgar Street. It's right next to the new house that was built and there's people that lives in the apartment. We go by what used to be Paul Harper's house. People are parking there. And they double park, like on the, the street that goes down towards Stan Bowles. And it makes it hard for the people that live in the apartment building to back their cars out because people are double parked behind them.
Okay.
And I, I didn't see them double parked. I didn't check this evening, but yesterday evening, the lady told me about it yesterday at a service that I was at. And I checked it last night. People park, like the garages are there, people park this way in front of the garages. But then, I guess there's other people that live with them, they park there too. And then it's hard to get through there.
Okay.
And that's about all that I have right now. We'll go to me and you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a two-part today. The first part is to have council discuss the acquisition of the 11.47 acres. That was part of the annexation of lands into the town pursuant to the annexation resolution 0221 that was effective in 2022. This was part of the settlement, stipulation settlement agreement that allowed the town the option to purchase those, that acreage for 4,500 per acre for a total of $51,651. This has been a part of the budget for some years. We have until, I believe, we have five years from the operational date of the solar facility. So, the operational date of the solar facility was April 21st of 2022. So, we have about a year and a half left to exercise that option. So, at this point, we're looking to town council to see if they would like to proceed with exercising that option for the land acquisition now, despite not having the preliminary engineering reports back from MDE and the approval from them and not knowing, you know, everything that we need to know prior to the purchase. So, that's the first part of, is having discussion as far as how the town would like to proceed, if they want to proceed immediately, then we can move on to the next part.
Well, I would, I think would be to our benefit to go ahead and purchase that as soon as possible so it doesn't get away from us.
I move that we proceed.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second to proceed with purchasing the property. And motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing non-aloud in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motion's carried.
So, the next part is introducing ordinance 320. Again, this will go for a public hearing at the next town council meeting in November. This will be published so that the community is aware of it. This allows the town, the option, or it authorizes the town to exercise the option to purchase and to acquire the lot of ground containing the acreage for the full price of the 51,651, which the town charter authorizes the town to do so. They are allowed to acquire real property for any public purpose. And part of this is for the wastewater treatment plant. Even if the town would not be able to proceed with the wastewater treatment plant, the town is allowed to acquire this property. So, that is up for introduction for today again. Then it will go to the public hearing at the next town council meeting.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about the ordinance 320?
Well, I think we reduce that tonight and then we have our public hearing next month. Thank you. Is that all?
That is all I have for tonight.
Okay, Mr. Hill, about Jackson Ridge.
Barton Hill, President Woodhaven Building and Development, 4175 Hannover Pike, Manchester, Maryland. The town currently has an ordinance as part of their sewer allocation program that requires 20,000 gallons of sewer capacity to be reserved. Doesn't spell out, what I've read, exactly what for, but the general consensus it's for industrial development. And the past 30 years that I'm aware of, I don't think there's been any need for it. And I'm here to ask you to, to consider reducing that reservation to 10,000 gallons, which I believe would be more inadequate based on the pace of resident, excuse me, industrial development. I presented at the council's work session this month a copy of a report that was done for the town in 2016 by Arrow Engineering that lays out what capacity is remaining in the sewage treatment plant. Was then, and it is now. There's been nothing of any, no significant change since that time. That, if that were reduced to 10,000 gallons, that would free up 10,000 gallons for other use and under the town's policy, it's first come, first served. I'm particularly interested because we have the Jackson Ridge development that has had preliminary approval, construction plans signed and ready. And that additional 10,000 gallons of capacity would allow the first section of 73 lots to move forward, once we accomplish whatever issues need to be addressed in that process. As a side note, at this time, we are retesting the well out at the Jackson Ridge property. Lieutenant Roe, here with me, has been working with the Eichelberger Weld Drilling Firm. I think they're out of Gettysburg. We pulled the pump out there, found out which we're going to put a complete new pump in. But while we have the pump out and we have them on site, we're going to do a flow test, yield test, and then do all of the testing that we need for MDE approval and anything. So, my request is that you would reduce the reserve to 10,000 gallons in your ordinance for allocation, other than, so that you could allocate the other 10,000, other than industrial.
Okay. I think Brett, you have some comments. We're talking with, we're working with MDE about our flow that we have right now.
We need to talk with MDE, need to talk further with our operator. But MDE would be the, you know, the final word on whether they will let us increase the capacity to this ancient wastewater plant. I'd really like to see.
Excuse me, we're not asking to increase the capacity.
Well, of the current usage of, of what it's going into. Right now, right now, because we're in a, at least a three-year drought period, they may, they may have something to say about that our flows right now being reduced due to the drought. So, we need to talk to them. We will consider your request, but we do need to talk with them. And we do still need, we need to work something out for the new wastewater plant. There has to be a plan with the developers to fund this new wastewater plant. Now, if that's special taxing, or if it's, I'm not sure what they call that, but where you guys would build it, but then you would recoup your money directly from the residents. And I thought about this since we talked last, and that has to be in place before development starts because those people need to be a part of that. I don't think you could build that and then say, "Oh, well, now you're going to, we're going to throw this extra charge on you," or this additional tax. So, we need to work all that out as well.
Well, I think we've said from day one that as a developer, we recognize that we will pay for our share. And that's just.
But it's how it's done. It's.
Excuse me?
It's how it's done. We can't, and we've said this for years, that we cannot afford to borrow the money and wait for that money to come in on the back end as you develop. That we just can't. We can't afford to make the payments. We can't do it. So, we have to, that, that is, that has to be, there's no reason that all of this can't work hand in hand and we can't do all this together. But we, that is something we need to do. I know at a previous meeting, you, you expressed a willingness to forward fund your portion of it. I don't know how you feel about that still, but we need, we need to get the funding in place so that the new wastewater plant can, we can get that moving. The PER should be approved, oh my God, this week from the emails I've seen. And that should allow us to get moving on design. And, and then a better cost estimate of, of where we're going to be.
Sure. I think you have to keep in mind, and maybe you're overlooking the fact, that every EDU that we pay for before you even start building a new plant is putting money into the coffers and building additional funding. So.
We need to look at that too, because I don't know what those numbers are.
I don't either.
Yeah. We need to look at that as well.
That all has to be looked at.
Yes.
And I recognize that it's just, need to move forward, even if it's an inch. Because we haven't moved forward in the past 25 years, an inch.
And I think we're closer to being able to do that now than we have been in a long time. But we still need to work all these things out.
And we, and we understand that, but what I'm asking for isn't anything in the new plant. We're asking to use what's here and put that money in your pocket.
But if, if, if the answer is a special taxing district or the other, and I don't, I can't remember what they called it. But that has to apply to these original people as well.
Oh, yeah.
So, we, we need to work this out as we.
You move so slow.
Well.
I mean.
And MDE has been really dragging their feet for the past two years just to proving the plans that we have. And that's part of the problem because one time they say that we're in, we're in a consent order because our flows are way more than what it should be because the, you know, infill, infu, what do you call it?
I and I.
I and I.
Yeah.
And we've been working on that. We, we just had some of the problems corrected, but.
I think the last thing I saw from your current engineers was saying, "It's not worth the money."
What's not worth the money?
Going after the I and I.
I don't know about that.
That's what I read.
I don't know, but they're saying that we're, when the flows are there, we're way over our, you know, our.
The study that was done by Arrow takes into consideration, if you look at the copy I gave you, for drought conditions. And I don't think the current conditions, and I'll be quick to agree that we're in a drought situation, preclude the town from looking at modifying the ordinance so that something can be done. That's, that's my point.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to, we want to get something going too, because I'm like you. I'd like to see some ground move over there before I die too.
Yeah, and I'm getting pretty old there.
Well, you're not that far ahead of me, but we've both been on this project for a long, long time. I'd like to see something done too, you know.
Well, thank you, and I'll hold you to that.
Okay.
I have a question. The 73 residential lots, are they single-family homes or town homes or mixed?
Everything, single-family.
Single-family, okay.
Single-family detached.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That'll be it for now. Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. Okay. Deputy McGinnis.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to apologize. You guys probably didn't see too much of me this past month and that's because I had my weekly in-service block and I had the Vietnam Traveling War Memorial up in New Windsor, and that was 24-hour coverage for us. So, I had some, a couple busy weeks. I worked two weeks straight and the wife was a little stir-crazy at the end of that. But that's not, that's not the bar for the rest of the year. I hope everybody knows that, you know, that was just a unique month for me. I'm going to be in town more often, so I wanted to apologize for lack of presence this past month. So, anyhow, between September 22nd and October 27th, 2025, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to 37 records within the town of Union Bridge. I'm doing this a new way now to kind of list all the events. The records included 1 911 hang-up, 2 alarm calls, 3 miscellaneous calls, 12 billing checks, 2 disturbance calls, 2 domestic disputes, 1 harassment, 2 check welfares, 2 parking complaints, 1 suspicious call, and 2 traffic stops. And out of those included records, 7 were found to be reportable. I forgot to include the Partridge in the Pear Tree with that, but I guess that's too early yet.
Can I, what makes them reportable as opposed to not reportable?
Sure. So, when we get an event, so that's listing every single call that comes through with our dispatchers. If somebody calls 911, or if we're in our patrol vehicle and we're patrolling the town and we want to log a patrol check, that logs the event. So, that 39 number you get, or 37, I guess, is all the events that were logged. So, that's including the school checks, that's including, you know, if I wanted to drive around and just do a patrol check of 7/11. Granted, I do that, I don't log them, but, you know, I could, per se, log more events, patrol checks and things of that nature. It just would kind of cloud the system, I believe, unless you had a reason to log it. So, the reportable events, I'm sorry, the events are just, like, you get a situation number with it. You don't get a case number. So, the case number is a full-on report, like criminal investigation, you have it, or open investigation. The event number is just stamping the incident, if that makes sense. It's just a card that we open up for the incident. And we can add notes to that card, because not all calls are reportable, right? I mean, you might get like, you know, say, 2 people just having a disagreement on the street and you, you just want to identify on both, run both their names. But in case something happens later, you have that card to pull up to, you know, "Oh, hey, you know, that person's alleging this happened now," and we then have their names. So, it's, it's good for our records. A lot of times with civil matters and something that we don't normally document on our end, people do get event numbers from us and that helps them with, you know, if they have a legal issue that hits court. I'm sure you've heard of event numbers in court. So, yeah, that, I hope that made sense the way I explained it, but.
So, the only ones that are found to be reportable are the ones you actually have to take further action with?
That's right. We'll actually assign a report number while we're on scene. So, we can either do that through the radio, or we can hop in our car and hit, assign a report number. And then that is an open investigation, which is open until we find a way to close it, either by prosecution, or a lack of leads, or, you know, a lack of prosecution. So, yeah, essentially, it's an open investigation assigned to us. Or it gets sent to CID based on, you know, the severity of it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, 7 reportable incidents were found. On 9/22/25 at 4:21 PM, a domestic disturbance was reported on North Benidham Street. A mutual assault was reported between a father and son with conflicting stories. No evidence of injury was observed and parties were separated. DB paperwork was completed and submitted, and that case was closed by juvenile referral. I think I did mention that one in our last meeting, because it happened the day of. On 9/29/25 at 10:34 PM, a domestic was reported on North Main Street. A physical assault occurred over child custody agreements. It was later determined that the original complaint was the primary aggressor in that situation and the subject was arrested and transported to Central Booking. That case was closed. On 10/6/25 at 5:53 PM, a suspicious was reported on North Leitner Street. An assault took place on the street, which was observed by an anonymous party. The subject advised that a cellphone was thrown at the victim's face, causing a laceration. Case is open pending consultation with the state's attorney's office for prosecution. On 10/9/25 at 7:58 AM, a vehicle collision occurred on Green Valley Road at North Main Street. The vehicle made a left-hand turn in front of a dump truck, moving at a constant speed, which caused a collision. The vehicle was occupied twice and the occupants lied about who was driving the vehicle. Dash cam was gathered from the truck confirming the female passenger was driving. The driver did not possess a driver's license and citations were issued. On 10/9/25 at 11:06 PM, deputies responded to North Leitner Street for a disturbance. During the investigation and interviews with parties inside the home, suspected controlled dangerous substances were observed on a dresser, including a pipe and white powder. No one at the home admitted ownership. The evidence was gathered and the report was taken. That case is open. On 10/11/25 at 3:28 PM, a domestic was reported on North Leitner Street. It was later found that the situation was verbal only and this case was documented, but closed due to a lack of prosecution. On 10/13/25 at 4:41 PM, an assault was reported on South Benidham Street. Subjects were attending a food pantry and had a disagreement and pushing occurred. Victims were referred for charges and the case is still open. And that concludes my report. So, yeah, a little bit busier this past month than last month. And there is normally uptick this time of year. So, hopefully, things get a little better going forward.
I just hope so, anyway.
Yep. And there is a trend. I will, not disclosing the address, but the Leitner Street address was all the same address, just so. So, Laura, if you want to work with me on that, we can, we can get started on that.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay, committee portion. We start with Tony over in the corner.
I have no new business. It's been very quiet this month.
Oh, good. Brett?
Pretty much talked about what I had to follow down.
Laura?
Okay, so we need to purchase parking meters and we no longer have any in stock. So, I need to make a motion that we purchase 6 new parking meters from Civic Smart in the amount of $1,434.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to purchase some new parking meters. Any questions? Logan? And Dawn, okay, I think. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes? Okay, motion's carried.
Okay. The property managers, Joy and Stacy at Shriner Court, have had problems with units 520 and 536, and I'd like to make a motion to allow them to send notices to the residents.
Second.
Motion and a second to send letters to those residents. Any questions?
Aye, I'm steaming.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Who's, okay.
Okay, and then to my report, I spoke to someone regarding her grandson's truck that was parked on West Broadway. He had parked at a meter spot and left town and took his truck keys with him, and she was concerned that his truck would be towed while he was out of town for a few days. So, I reached out to her and let her know that we would work with her and not tow it. And I spoke with Lita and asked her not to pursue anything that would require it being towed. And then that was on October 9th. On October 21st, I sent a message to Kevin regarding some suspicious activity on White Street from some complaints, and that's all.
Okay. Okay, Logan?
The only thing I have is Donald Wilson asked about putting, planting 2 pin oak trees out at the park. And I just want to run it by the council and make sure everybody else is in agreeant, in agreeance with it. I'll make sure that the locations aren't an issue and let them go ahead and get them planted.
It's okay with you, sorry, but it's sorry to me, it's sorry to you.
That's all I have.
Do we need to make a motion or anything?
I don't think we have to. Not on that, no. Park looks pretty good down there. Hopefully, stay that way. Okay, we're moving right along here. Public comments and concerns. Public comments and concerns once? Twice? 3 times? Okay. Our next work session is scheduled for November the 10th. Our next council meeting is scheduled for November the 24th. Have we looked as far as December? Are we still going to have December's meeting the week of Christmas? Are we going to move up? Phoenix Christmas is at the end of the week. We can have it the first part of the week?
Yeah.
Still be done.
Is everybody going to be here?
Would, that'd be the 22nd?
Yeah. Follow me. I just want to make sure it's all right for everybody, just looking ahead. Figured it was going to be Christmas at the end of the week, at week, so we can still have it on time. Okay? And like I say, we will be having a Christmas decoration. We'll discuss that at the work session. We also will discuss on judges to go around and do the judging on the houses. Get some people that are willing to do that. Last time, I think we had. Last time, I think we had like five judges that he rode around one night and judged everything and gave us their recommendation. Well, they picked out who was what and what category, so we'll decide at our next meeting how we're going to do the categories and have that sent out and have Joe make sure he puts it out on Facebook or whatever he does. I don't have Facebook, but everybody else does. And we'll make sure that Chris gets it put on the website and everybody have a fair chance to win. Okay, we have nothing else for our meeting this evening. We're in line for adjournment.
Trick or treating?
Oh, trick or treating is Friday evening at, in town, from six to eight, and then also tomorrow night at six o'clock, the Lounge Club has their Halloween party at the Fire Hall as normal. They'll have treats in there and they'll have a judging contest, dinner for costumes, and it starts at six o'clock at the Fire Hall tomorrow evening. And that is about all that I do have, so we're in line for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all those favor eyes?
Aye.
Noes? Thank you very much.